Pard the meeting for the North Branford Town Council to order for Tuesday, January 17, two thousand and seven, at seven oh five PM.
Start with you.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Here.
Deputy Mayor Joseph E. Fawnin.
Here.
Tom Andrew Michael T. Paulus. Councilmember Rose Marie Angeloni.
Here.
Councilmember Daniel M. Arman.
Here.
Councilmember Anthony S. Candelora. Councilmember Marie E. Diamond.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Miana.
Here.
Councilmember George Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Al Ruse.
Here.
Motion to accept the previous minutes' meeting for January third, two thousand and seventeen, water pollution control authority in town council.
So moved.
Second.
Next, we're going to regular town council meeting?
Cut it off.
Is there any corrections? Roll call on the council?
No corrections, Mr. President.
No corrections.
Mayor Duddy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilmember Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilmember Arman.
Yes.
Councilmember Candelora. Abstained. Councilmember Diamond.
Yes.
Councilmember Miana.
Abstained.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruse.
Yes.
Okay, next item is reports, boards, we'll go into regular town council meeting, reports, boards, committees, and commissions, economic development.
Economic development, had an excellent meeting last week, they met with Engineering Specialties Incorporated, ESI, which is on Twin Lakes Road, believe it or not, they shipped three hundred million parts out of that little facility on Twin Lakes Road, three hundred million, a year, they're looking to expand, they just purchased a property on Commerce Drive, off of Route eighty, they had, when they remodeled that building on Twin Lakes Road, they installed a hundred and twenty-three kilowatt solar panel system, which ended up paying off in four years, they currently have twenty-five employees, and they're looking to hire, if anybody's looking for a job, contact them, their success, you know, is a result of a positive and productive relationship between business in town and town hall, they also met with Denise George, who oversees the Facebook page, North Branford Proud, which is dedicated to community events and announcements and community support, and they also met with Kevin George, who started North Branford Proud Business, which is dedicated to announcements and correspondence of businesses in town, economic development is holding a breakfast January thirty-first, at seven thirty AM, here in town hall chambers, where one of the agenda items is to review the responses from their business survey that they sent out last year, and I encourage everybody to look at Pam Johnson's article on the Economic Development Commission, she had on Zippo six, January thirty-first.
Next item is Park and Rec.
Park and Rec has not met since our last meeting.
Next is Police Commission.
Police Commission met on January ninth, some highlights to mention, first of all, there are now six cars, over a hundred thousand miles, and between the months of October to December, costs for tires and repairs are well over fifty-five hundred dollars, which is something to note, and I think the commission is probably going to be looking at needing some new cars, the commission also wants the council to know that, the commission totally appreciates the fact that the council approved the fence repair, and we thank Franny for that, and also thank town council for the opportunity to put out bids for the gate installation, there's a need to hire two additional police officers, they've had thirty-four applicants, what's happening now is you get fewer and fewer laterals applying, so they're most likely going to end up with new recruits that they'll have to send to the academy, and the last really nice event, that meeting, was the swearing-in ceremony for Lieutenant Lovelace.
Thank you, Fire Commission, Fire Commission met, good word, as the ambulance is still up and running, no further problems with it. Next item is Board of Education, Town Council's Communications Subcommittee.
There is no meeting.
Town Planning Goals Subcommittee.
No meeting.
Public Safety Communications Committee.
The Public Safety Communications Committee met on January eleventh, we're continuing to discuss the pros and cons of regional dispatch center, looking at, continuing to look at union issues, financial issues, and control functions, we will meet again in February.
Since you're on that, I got a letter from, a copy of the letter that went to Chief Cannelli, said, "Last evening, Rescue Three, Engine Three, Tanker Three each attempted to call the dispatcher twice on North Branford Fire Department, Channel One, dispatcher did not answer any of their transmissions, this happened between seven fifteen and seven thirty, after the sixth attempt to call, dispatch, an acknowledgement was received, I radioed the dispatcher and asked if everything was all right at the police department, he replied, it was okay, officers and members of this department questioned why it takes six attempts to receive a response from the town's emergency communications center, and the answer, I guess, was I cannot answer that question," and it was sent by Chief Seward, so, that's maybe something for your next discussion at the Public Safety Committee meeting.
My, yes, and my understanding is that the Fire Commission is going to request a copy of that recording, so they have more information.
Next item, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Planning and Zoning met last week, they had two public hearings, one was completed, that was helping the Historical Society straighten out the issues with the Reynolds-Beards House, and the second one is on the new floating zone proposed for Clintonville Road for the age-restricted housing, and that one remains open, and there's a traffic study being requested from RPJ.
Next item, East Shore Health District.
We met Thursday, we're in negotiations with the sanitarians, we meet on Thursday with their union rep, it may go to arbitration, we're not sure, there are eight people on the board, based on population, three from East Haven, three from Branford, two from North Branford, we are vacant one person, Mike, have you heard of any interest in filling it yet?
I have not.
So if anybody out there who knows a town resident who would be interested in filling the non-political position as to be a board member representing North Branford's interests in the East Shore Health District, please call Mike's office, it's been five months now.
Yeah.
Moving to the Town Manager's Report, review of budget calendar for two thousand and seventeen.
Yes, I put this in the calendar for your consideration, I think we could have that discussion next meeting, but just wanted to give you an idea that obviously we're getting closer to the start of the budget season, budget process, I've already issued the letter to department heads, and looking at preparing their budgets, so I thought I'd throw this in the package, just so you get an idea, wasn't sure if, you know, for next month, next meeting, you want to discuss whether or not you want Saturday meetings and how you want to structure, but just give it some thought, and I did hear from Counselor Miller about looking at the schedule in March of suggesting that we move the smaller budgets like library to first place, and also Public Works and Park and Rec above Board of Education when you look at the twenty-first and twenty-second of March, but again, those are just placeholders for your consideration, we can get into it next meeting and kind of outline that.
Well, last year, just because of the way the days felt, like our meetings were March first and the fifteenth, and then we had the department head meetings the week after, we didn't have them the same night as a council meeting, which I think will just be too difficult to have police, fire, and library on the same night as a council meeting, so I think we need to either look at between the two council meetings or the week after, I don't think it's fair to us to have the council meeting and then go into department meetings afterwards, and we did them during the night, we didn't do Saturday meetings last year, we did them on the night, and that seemed to work out fine.
Right.
Okay. Okay, next is review of Garland Report on Stanley T. Williams Community Center Roof.
Yeah, that's been on my desk for a while, I just wanted to bring that forward to give you an idea, and think of it in terms of context of long-term capital planning, it was, you know, provided to us by Garland, who was, you know, the group that put on the roof at TBES, and they were there in the vicinity, took a look at it, obviously they're a company that's looking for more work, but just kind of highlights the issue that we have another aging facility with a roof that we'll have to address, not necessarily today or tomorrow, but some point down the road, and that's probably, you know, one of the larger capital items that we'll have to consider, just, you know, food for thought, it's, you know, information in there, somewhat helpful in terms of knowing that we've got to address it at some point.
Do we, are there any major concerns, right, I know there were leaks and things like that, and I saw there were two options, one was to repair, which would probably get us about two years, and then one is...
Full replacement.
Is a full replacement on there, so...
No major issues that I'm aware of, but certainly that's something that I'll get into with, on the board outside, plus, you know, talk to Reg Rec and see what they, what they're experiencing, being half of the, half of the building, the senior center in that section, we'll check it out, I'll check it out, I'll go through, but nobody's brought anything major to my attention at this point, so...
I noticed on the proposal that there were, was at least one item that was noted that could be done by us, by the town, is there any thought to doing any of that, to initiating any of these attentions?
Yeah, I'll go through and review that, and again, maybe, you know, having a walk through with various individuals, and Fullon and Bill Choy and Fran and so forth, but I haven't done that yet, but it'll be something...
If they point out areas that need to be sealed, or flashed, or otherwise managed, and they're small, then we should be doing those.
Right, yeah, yeah, no, I think they've done a good, yeah, in terms of highlighting with the pictures and so forth, and I think we need to, I need to set some time aside to put together a small group to tour that, and to make sure that we're addressing that, and as Rose said, I'm unaware, but there may be some issues, and I want to make sure that I sit down and meet with these folks that are living there and working there, and address, like you said, it's more important to us to address these issues now, and I'd like to prolong, you know, keep this going as long as we can, obviously, but I just, it's more of an FYI, and I'll continue to gather information and bring it back to you.
Well, at this point, you're more of a roof expert than Al.
No, I wouldn't know, I'm learning more than I ever thought I would.
He goes to all the meetings.
So, it's a big-ticket item, I mean, it's obviously a repair, we can go, you know, short-term, and we can try to keep it, keep it going for a while, but it, obviously at some point, it's going to be a large capital expenditure down the road.
Thank you, next is introduction of ATM pilot program at town hall.
Yes, I just wanted to bring your attention, we had an opportunity to sit with a local vendor, talk with that individual about supplying a service to town hall that would no cost to us, it's just an ATM transaction fee, like you see in many different locations, to be able to put in the outer lobby there by the door, for the purpose of tax season, if someone's got to pay in cash to release a, you know, DMV thing, or some other bill that's short on cash, that they can do that, it's just a pilot program to see if we'd even generate any kind of traffic or usage of that, they've agreed to, you know, front all the costs in setting all that up, and maintaining it, and doing it on a three-month trial period, just to see, you know, if it's as a convenience to taxpayers, and I guess it would be also town hall employees that would have access to it and use it if they wanted to pay the fee, but again, this is the, and a vendor we use, or the town has used in the Potato and Corn Festival each year for the last, I don't know, five, seven years, they've provided that, and he's been a good vendor and a good partner and a local businessperson here in town, so, I think it can't hurt to try it on a three-month basis, just wanted to give the council a heads-up.
After the trial basis, is he looking for a fee from the town?
No, I think in most cases, there just probably wouldn't be, I think there's an opportunity for most places to get a cut of the fee, but depending on where the number is, I'm not sure we would get anything, or a small, small transactional fee, but he wasn't looking for anything for months.
Are there any security issues on this?
Well, I don't think so, it's all his risk, we have cameras, obviously, we've set up, and we're, the building is secure, and the machine will be, you know, bolted to the floor, and I'm not concerned about that, I mean, it's their, it's their risk.
A lot of people come in here and then have to say, "Oh, I gotta go to an ATM and get cash."
I couldn't tell, yes, it happens, I don't know how much, it happens, I talked a little bit with Ken, Anthony might know a little bit more, in terms of the heavy tax season, and it fits with, you know, the rush that we're going to have, January, February, March, in terms of...
We accept credit cards, though, right?
Yeah, it's typically when people have to get motor vehicle rentals, if you want an immediate release, you gotta pay cash, so they come to the counter, already a little bit ranked up after they're delayed, okay, now you gotta go to the bank to get cash, now you gotta come back, just eliminates all that back and forth with taxpayers.
So you can't use your credit card for that transaction?
You would, but some folks don't want to use credit, they want to pay cash, and the fee that Mike's talking about, basically, is a two-dollar fee that he would charge, which is low, if you have an ATM, using three or four dollars in case, with none of that going to us, it'd all be strictly, we would take it for the convenience of the taxpayer, basically, and maybe, you know, five people use it and need sites to pull it out, doesn't, you know, make economic sense for them to keep it here, or maybe it's an opportunity for people that just come in, run with town hall business, need cash for other things in life, and they want to get an ATM, you know.
So where's it going to be located?
In the lobby, if somebody's coming at the one side, so the tree typically is over there.
So between the two doors?
Yeah, exactly.
So my only question is, just because somebody offered to do this, I mean, do we, who normally puts ATMs in, and what are their fees, you know what I mean, I mean, should we be looking, should we ask, you know, other, you know, banks or whatever, whoever puts them in places?
My understanding is banks won't approach you or won't do it, and...
So all ATMs are a private business?
Not all of them, some, but some, obviously in bank locations, but he's, I guess, yeah, he's a private vendor and has...
We didn't ask TD Bank in person with them of putting a, and there's not enough traffic to warrant their business.
Yeah, he's just taking a risk or a bet that there might be enough within town hall and/or town hall employees as well, but outside of this particular person who lives here and has worked with us at Potato and Corn Festival, I don't think we get any interest at all in any, any independent, private ATM service saying, "Yes, I'd love to be, I'd love to come in and do this," so, it seemed like, you know, if he was willing to take, you know, gamble, this is the convenience we can provide for the taxpayer, I figured, hey, we'd take a shot at it and see how it goes, you know...
So there's no cost to the town, there is a cost to the user of the machine?
Correct.
And is there a contract or agreement, do we get any sort of indemnification from him, if there's damage to his machine, vandalism, we're not responsible for it?
Whether, yeah, that's a great, yeah, that's something I talked to him about, if he's got a contract of that nature, if not, and whatever he shows, I can run by path, but, yeah.
If there is no expense to the town, and there is no exposure to the town, it's okay to try it, but if either of those things are present, it makes no sense, this is a town hall, it's not a bank branch.
And he totally maintains it?
Yeah.
How that we have no responsibility whatsoever.
Right.
And probably lastly, it ought to be terminable at the town's option at any time, if it's creating any issue, we just ask him to remove it.
Okay. So, you know, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna have any issues with this, you know, maybe it works, maybe it doesn't, but what I, I'm kind of having an issue with is, companies come into the, come into the town and say, "No, I'm gonna do this for the town, it's gonna cost you nothing," and, you know, one of them was the solar challenge, you know, we're supposed to get a free solar system on a building, and we haven't seen it yet, so, you know, I'm a little leery of these, doesn't cost you a thing, and most of the times, nobody keeps up their end of the battle, and I, you know, I doubt we'll ever see a free solar system, even though we supposedly want one. And if we do see it, it'll cost more for the R N that was in the really tiny print that nobody read, so it won't be worth doing.
Hi, I have one question for you, what if there's two or three other people in town that have ATM machine services, are we excluding them, not going out to bid, or...
I don't think you have to put it on...
Where there's no cost?
I don't think it's a legal issue.
Okay, next item is community events and presentations, our honorable state representatives of Vince and Candelora is here regarding the state budget, with all the good news.
Yeah, you won't use the word honorable out of confidence, so good evening, just, I guess to give you an update, we started session last week, and, you know, the bills are coming in, you know, fast and furious, so it's a little bit early to kind of gauge where we're going to be on policy issues, there is a hard push to eliminate the municipal spending cap, the two-point-five percent, that legislation, I think when it was drafted, one of the issues that I had is, it's going to force towns into arbitration, because arbitrated awards don't fall under the spending cap, so if there's no incentive to negotiate a contract, it might push you over the cap, you're better off going and arbitrating and getting the award, and if you're over the cap, you're not harmed, but that whole mechanism, the outcome of it is, if you violate the cap, it translates to a loss in useful revenue, so, you know, the state can pull money, so that's one of the first initiatives I think we may see, but currently, as you're budgeting, you know, we need to keep an eye on that two-point-five percent differential, the other issue is, there isn't a bill, again, that's been put in for the consolidation of nine-one-one systems, so I'll apprise you of where that bill goes, and, you know, the health districts, there's also a bill to consolidate health districts, and you're already in a regional district, but how that might impact this, we'll see, there's a lot of pushback on enforcement, especially both of the bills, we'll have a lot of controversy associated with it, especially the smaller towns in the northwest corner, in terms of the budget cycle, you know, right now, there's consensus revenue come in, two thousand and seventeen, this current fiscal year is balanced, there's a slight improvement in revenues, but I am concerned, the revenues that aren't doing well, is withholding and sales and use tax, the corporate tax went up a little bit, but those areas don't sort of point to the economy, so if sales and use is sluggish, which it is, withholding is sluggish, which it is, I am concerned that our deficit doesn't get larger, so we're looking at about, I think, a one-point-five billion value deficit going into next year, because the Senate is tied by party, and the House is much closer in numbers, I think the reality is that it's going to have to be a bipartisan budget, because there's not going to be enough on, to keep the both caucuses happy or unhappy, so I think there's going to have to be some meeting in the middle, and so that process, I think, is probably going to be longer drawn out, we're probably not going to know what our revenues look like, I'm thinking generally towns should be concerned about an upward of ten percent reduction overall, and that's sort of just my, my estimation, I have no basis in that, other than just kind of experience, being up there, and as you know, there was some mid-year cuts to ECS, our town got hit by about eighty-five thousand, we fare better than most, under the formula, we sort of do get protected, but again, another concern is the lawsuit that came to Hartford, that's calling for a reworking of the ECS formula, could be very disadvantage, disadvantageous to North Branford, so, that's going to be another issue that we're fighting in this session, is trying to keep ECS intact for our smaller towns, you know, just when there's no money, and the cities are crying for more through the formula to try to close the achievement gap, the bottom line is, any money that they get is going to be taken away from the small towns, so with that, you know, I don't have to answer any questions, but it's still just early on in the cycle, I don't think any of the committees have yet, none of them have met yet for officially draft bills, so that'll probably be forthcoming in a couple of weeks.
So the ten percent reduction that you're talking about, is that, are you talking all the state aid between ECS, LOSEF, municipal aid, all of that, or are you talking primarily ECS?
I would say primarily ECS, because LOSEF is disfunded out of bonding, although they did overextend this year with LOSEF, but I would think the budget with LOSEF dollars will stay around where it's been, so I'm probably, I'm speaking more toward ECS.
Right, as I mentioned, I was at an East Shore Health District meeting last week, and the consolidation was talked about, Ted Kennedy was there, do you have a gut feeling if this thing will go one way or another?
Based on talking to people, legislators in Hartford, I don't think that legislation will go forward, so, you know, part of my criticism, part of the issues that I do have is, I think the independent districts are more cost-effective at this point than the regionals, the regionals cost more, they provide more services, but it costs more to get into, I know Guilford and Madison have looked at going regional and issues...
Well, Guilford has a director, Madison's director recently retired, we tried to get him in with the East Shore, but they elected him to have their own.
Right, and because of that, because of budget and the way it's structured, if you have a local, it's easier to do, you have less responsibility, so, you know, do you want the Cadillac, or do you want a smaller agency that's more autonomous, and so the towns that have the smaller health districts don't want to move away from that, it works for them, and so that's why I don't see that legislation going.
Yeah, I, first of all, thanks for coming, any indication that there'd be any other reductions in the current year?
No, the consensus revenue came out today, which is, it's a forecasting that we'll do every quarter, roughly, and the latest forecast has us ten millions of good, so I don't anticipate that they would feel any cost, those mid-year cuts were built into the budget, so it wasn't, the cuts didn't come as a reduction of profit revenue, those cuts came as a, it was a budgeted lapse, so essentially, the budget document was drafted to say, fine twenty million dollars out of the municipal funds sometime during the year, and so, that's what the government was... what the governor was charged with. So I think there was a hope that revenue would turn around and balloon and we wouldn't have to make the cut. That didn't happen, so the governor had to issue the cuts.
So how many dollars does that 10, the hypothetical 10 percent equate to for us?
Well, for North Ramford, it's probably like 450,000.
450,000?
About 8.2%.
Oh, yeah, right.
So that'd be like 800,000?
Yeah.
Don't make long, huh?
Good thing, good thing for debt reduction.
Amen.
As we go forward, we will continue to, you know, that's a cut that I'm gonna fight. I mean, it's, it's easy to say, okay, I'm gonna cut every, you know, fight every cut. The reality is we're gonna have to cut somewhere. But the ECS formula is really the only mechanism to fund towns. And it translates to a tax increase to provide those cuts. So it's really not a cost effective cut for the state to make. So hopefully, it stays intact. But it's gonna be a difficult balance, budget to balance. You know, the union concessions are gonna have to come forward. That's the only way we're gonna do this.
And how about for revenue? Where do you think the tolls on the borders and stuff will go?
I don't think the tolls are ever gonna happen.
Not, not this year?
All the studies show that it's a, it's a net revenue, it's a, it's a zero net revenue gain.
Oh, it is?
Yeah. Because we lose our federal highway money if we put tolls in. And frankly, it's a sexy argument to make. People want tolls. So everyone says, I'm worried for tolls.
Well, everywhere we drive, we see other states with tolls.
Right. So everybody says we should be doing tolls, but nobody's honest about the fact that if you put the tolls in, you lose your federal highway money. It's gonna take four years to put in, and you have to expend billions of dollars of construction costs. And it, it, it won't solve short-term problems because it's a four-year correction. So if we're gonna do tolls, we should be doing it for, you know, congestion and traffic purposes. But I, I just don't, I don't see it ever going forward as a revenue solution because it's, it's not there.
So, also, and thank you for coming, Trey. There was discussion about the mileage tax. And I know I got a visit, and our business, people lobbying against it. Is that still on the table?
I think it's still being studied, but I think that proposal will never see the light of day in the legislature.
And then on the flip side, I mean, I know we all talk about cuts and saving money. And are they thinking on the level of how to bring business to our state? I mean, we're losing, what, 33,000 residents a year. We were losing businesses left and right. We don't seem to be a business friendly state. To me, I think we should also look at trying to bring in revenue, you know, being more business friendly.
So, I mean, there certainly are proposals on the table right now. I'd love to say the new leadership in Hartford, it's, this Speaker of the House works very well for both sides of the aisle. He's very open. You know, one of the problems, the conflict he does have is he's, he's supported by a pastor. So there's, you know, a bit of a conflict going on there. But I think that generally, there is a recognition that we need to focus on business development and worry about businesses. So I think you're gonna see those proposals going forward. That's part of the reason why, you know, we're looking at cuts because we can't increase taxes. And so that's why the dialogue is going in the direction that it's going.
But, you know, you, that being said, you know, when the towns get, small towns get cut, you know, it's putting the burden on the local taxpayers.
So I, I agree with you.
So it's a shift.
On the council, so I know exactly that. And I think there are more and more people. Fortunately, there's a lot of people up there that have served locally on councils and selectmen who are now serving the legislature. And I think they get that correlation. And so it's something that we're certainly gonna, gonna fight because, again, it doesn't make us competitive. We're just gonna increase the real property taxes.
Are there opportunities for the public to speak?
Yeah, absolutely.
So I, as a town council member, could go up to Hartford and say my piece and my concerns?
You could. You could speak. And also, it's, it's very simple to send emails up. So if there's legislative proposals, you could actually submit, you could email it to me and I could submit it.
Okay.
You could write letters on different legislation and send it. It's very easy. You could do it directly online, or go into committee, and, and just picking that. Or you could send it to me. But feel free to just always email me or text me or whatever, inbox me and let me know and I could, I could help you through the process.
Okay, thank you.
Do you, do you see a lot of cuts in state personnel that will affect man services for, for the residents in the, in the state?
Yes. I, I think it's already happening. I mean, I think.
So you see, do you see more of that happening?
I think my concern is, is that there isn't a lot of planning going on. The agencies are trying to get their arms around these cuts. You know, they've all been asked to cut 1%. There are, departments are significantly down in staffing.
The courts were.
And, yeah. I mean, that's one area. And that, the courts have been hit dramatically because they get a block grant. So they're just getting chopped and lumps and then they have to figure out how to allocate the resources. But without union concessions and without new contracts, there's no other option but to lay people off. So the reductions have already been significant. My, my concern is that, I mean, you reach a point where there's some agencies that might, or departments that might not make sense to even continue to operate because there's so few people.
There have been no union concessions at this point, have there?
No.
The new contract comes up in 2021 or something like that?
It was extended to 2022, I believe. So they're in talks right now. One of the things that, that I actually have offered an amendment on the House floor is in our rules to force a vote on all the union contracts and negotiations because right now, the legislature does not approve. They get put on the calendar and they're deemed approved by inaction. So for the first time, knock on wood, the first time in, in over 20 years, we're actually voting on a, the pension agreement to refinance the pension on February 1st. So the legislature, my hope is that we start voting on these contracts and take, you know, active role. And that might be enough leverage to, to try to start negotiating some better deals.
So are all those things in the union contract, like the ridiculous things, like their longevity payments and stuff like that?
So items that we were able to statutorily take away from this, one of them was the longevity payment that was taken away from non-union employees. And so we reworked that legislation. And some of the, the way pension is tested. But by and large, you know, the healthcare, you know, there are no deductibles, there's very low co-pays.
Yeah, they gotta, they gotta come into this century.
Yeah. You're gonna have to find benefit plans to, and, and they're paid well.
They, they are.
So it's, you know, the booming is.
Again, all these packages went in, you know, in the 1950s and 60s when they weren't paid what the general population was. Now you look at it, they made three times what the average person working is making, and they have all these ridiculous benefits.
Yeah. I mean, the current contract that was negotiated in the early 90s, right after the income tax, the state was flush with money. And those contracts have been riding out ever since. They just really need to be done based on the level of.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, citizen statements and petitions and correspondence. And then we'll move into resignations and appointments. Appointment of Frank Bargano to plan in the zoning commission as an alternate, term to expire 5/31/18.
So moved.
Second.
Bargano.
It's Frank Bargano.
Bargano. Next.
We have a vote.
Roll call? Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnan?
Yes.
Councilmember Angeloni?
Yes.
Armin?
Yes.
Candelora?
Yes.
Diamond?
Yes.
Manna?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
And Rose?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item is reappointment of Deborah Falvey to the library board, term to expire 12/31/18. So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Deputy Fawnan?
Yes.
Councilmember Angeloni?
Yes.
Armin?
Yes.
Candelora?
Yes.
Diamond?
Yes.
Manna?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
And Rose?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next is appointment of Sean Flynn to the building code board of appeals, term to expire 7/31/18.
So moved.
Second. Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnan?
Yes.
Councilmember Angeloni?
Yes.
Armin?
Yes.
Candelora?
Yes.
Diamond?
Yes.
Manna?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
And Rose?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move into unfinished business, discussion in action, review of police facility renovation and expansion project.
Last, last month, we presented the 15 areas, listed the 15 areas in the police facility that, that are really in need of some renovation or expansion. I, I mentioned to you that we're looking at, you know, an option of perhaps going through the USDA, if that's a possibility, through a, through a loan. And we're still looking at that as, as something that we'd like to do. So I think at this point, we've completed the needs assessment and I would like to make a motion. It's not as often a motion that's in front of you, but I've kind of changed it a little bit, make a motion to send out an RFP, which is a request for proposal for architectural drawings to renovate the 15 areas of the police facility identified in our needs assessment study. We really cannot continue even looking at the loan possibility unless we have some numbers and we know what it's gonna cost. And once we get that, then we could, if it's, it's too high, we can, obviously, we can pare it down. But we can't really move any further unless we have an idea of the cost.
So I'll second that motion.
Do you wanna just state where it's coming from, where that, where the funding is coming from?
Hopefully, it would come from the $100,000 that's in the facility study.
Well, you're not authorizing, your motion's not authorizing using any money.
No.
No.
So you're just looking to send out an RFP?
RFP to get an idea what it would cost.
And then we get the prices?
Right.
And then we're gonna look at it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call?
I have the, uh.
Well, I just have one question. What, is there a cap on the money that we're gonna spend or how much?
Well, we're just getting in our P to see.
We're just getting in our, we'll see what the.
And then we'll have to.
Then we'll, then we'll decide.
Once our P comes in, then we'll have to discuss.
All right. And I wasn't sure if we were going to like a certain amount.
We decided not to, to use the motion in there because, you know.
Figure it in the motion. It's purely arbitrary.
We, we have no idea.
Yeah. Okay.
So when's our next meeting? I wonder if they couldn't draft the RFP and then have us review it before it goes out?
Yeah.
So you're gonna draft it and bring it back in two weeks or whatever?
Right. We don't meet, there's a fifth Tuesday, so that gives us extra time, I, I think extra time, because the first meeting in February is not until the, I think it's the 6th or 7th. So you'd like to see it back here?
I, I would like to see it. And, you know, only because we used to do things that way. And then that way, you know, we can look at the 15 things that you wanna look at and make sure that that RFP covers those 15 things. I'm not saying that they aren't going to, but, you know, then we just send it out after that next meeting.
Okay, with that amendment on there? Roll call?
You're, you're amending it then?
I guess.
I would.
Okay, so I'll make that.
So it happens in pro fact. I need a second.
I'll second that.
Bring the RFP back to.
Back to us before we send it out, that's all.
I'll second that.
Roll call?
Mayor Dudi?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnan?
Yes.
Councilmember Angeloni?
Yes.
Armin?
Yes.
Candelora?
Yes.
Diamond?
Yes.
Manna?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
And Rose?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item is RFP for marketing of 1599 Fox Road, North Ramford. That was tabled and it's tabled until 4/4/17. Next item is fire ordinance. This is chapter 40. First item is fire rescue billing.
Well, I think these are just to set a public hearing date if we want to, correct?
Right. That's what, yeah. It, Pat and I reviewed and put all this together and it's just to set the public hearing.
Were we gonna get any backup on that, you know?
Well, there's a bunch of these, there's a bunch of pages here.
Yeah. But we never really had a discussion.
How come I think you find us down?
Okay, so should we make a motion and?
Yeah, there's a prepared motion in there for each of those. Or, yeah. The first one is the chapter 40 fire department.
The ordinance? Proposed ordinance, right?
Right.
Okay, I move that the town council, North Ramford Town Council set a public hearing date for February 7th, 2017 at 7:30 PM on the proposed ordinance 2017-1 entitled Fire Department.
Second.
So discussion?
Discussion.
So which one is, when we're looking at the, like, the funds, so is that, would that be, you know, because it's not in order then. If, if, one, are we going on one or one, two, three right here?
It's, well, it gets solid into, into one motion for I per.
With the fire, the fire rescue billing, so it says, so the billing company shall send one bill out initially in 130 days. Hence, a complete listing of accounts billed. The council pays and the council will be provided for. That's not the part I wanted to talk about. Somewhere in here, so this money, you know, the way this is written, this money, oh, here it is right here, the use of the funds. I, I think this is wrong and I don't believe they should be doing this if they are now.
Which, which page are you on?
The, uh, Article 4, use of funds. I don't know, I'm down like, they put this all the way like at the end of all these pages here.
It's page 47.
Page 47.
Okay. So it says here, the expenditure, expenditure control for these funds shall mirror the general fund expenditures, approval of the department head, in this case, the North Ramford Fire Chief, with concurrence and approval of the Board of Fire Commissioners. Now, they can't and shouldn't be spending any money that isn't approved by this financial board. Isn't that correct?
Right. You approve it initially.
No, 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 not initially.
No.
Not initially. You're gonna have this money sitting in a fund. And it, and the way this is written, Anthony, and I read a lot of stuff in contracts, the way this is written, it says this money's gonna be sitting in a pocket.
Right.
In a bank account, maybe in our ATM machine. And by a simple, simply, simply the Fire Chief and the Board of Fire Commissioners, they can spend it. That's the way that paragraph reads.
Talking about the current general fund. You said, as I mentioned, the current general situation, you approve the budget and they manage the budget, like any other department. So there's two definitions. There's the current situation that references here. And that was mentioned, I think, when we first brought this up, Council Fawn, or Deputy Mayor.
I wasn't here that night.
Mentioned that we should change that to the town council has control of this pot of money. So there's two definitions. There's the general fund money that they get currently, like any other department.
Right.
The council gives them money and the Fire Chief manages it. Cool with that?
Mm-hmm.
And this pot of money, as was previously mentioned, it could be rewritten to say has to be blessed by the town council.
The fees are collected.
The money that's expended. Board recommends it, council blessed it, spend the money.
But I, but.
That's it out, so that, that last step, the council wants to bless the expenditure.
I, I always thought, I remember way back when.
It doesn't say that currently. You're right now.
Oh, okay.
I mean, you're buying, you're saying. Because you're buying, you're buying, you're saying.
I thought you were telling me it says that here now.
Al, Al, this is a wish list.
Uh-uh.
Okay.
So we have to have the public hearing and then we can make changes.
Okay.
Yeah, because way back when, like when Public Works did the scrap metal.
Correct.
And we had said, why don't we take that money, put it in account and they could buy their work boots or gloves, and you said, no.
They do that now.
Yeah, but you said, no, they can't do that, because every department, you know, all that money's got to go in the general fund and then it comes out and goes.
I don't remember if that's true, but.
I remember it. Because you said, you know, each individual department can't raise, you know, like raise their own money and keep it. Correct?
That's an accurate statement.
Okay, yeah.
And then the only other thing I'll say is, there's a lot in this for a public hearing.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know how we can get this out to the public so they know it. And, and I certainly don't want to just see, oh, public hearing on Article Forty.
Right.
Because there's like fifteen pages of stuff here where we're going to be charging people in town. And I just don't, I just want to make sure they know that, that, you know, somehow the town is aware of what all these pages say. So that they can come out and talk intelligently at the public hearing.
Yeah, council also has the ability.
Because if it's in the legal modus, it's Article Forty, we're going to have another propane issue on our hands.
You're right. I think we can do what we can to, you know, publicize, put that on, make it accessible on the website. But you also have, I mean, this media, which is, which is taped, this meeting and the ability to extend the public hearing to, you know, multiple here.
Yeah, but if you just put it out there that we're going to discuss Article Forty, we're going to have zero people in the room.
Right.
Yeah, because, and within that, we have to discuss all these fees separately. Right.
Yeah.
There's a lot. Yeah.
Yeah. And because on, a couple of the agendas, it said fire rescue building.
Unless you break it down and do one a month. Fire rescue bill in one month, fire marshal fees next month, key lock boxes a third month.
You need a fourth lock for that.
Yeah, then street signs. If you feel it's too much at one time.
I don't know, and maybe it's not.
Break it down.
I mean, I read through this thing, but maybe it's, you know, maybe it's not a, maybe it's not, not an issue. I mean, we can have the breakdown on the website and we can have it.
Well, I think we need some hard copies at the libraries also.
Right, that's what I was just going to say. So we need printouts at the libraries and at town hall for people to have access to. So that they can review.
You know, going through this experience, like with the ambulance, as we all know, um.
Nobody pays.
Right, like we have a contract that collects that money and what happens when they don't collect?
Right, so, yeah, there's no.
Right.
No meat behind these fees, is what you're saying.
Right.
Has anybody talked, and I know maybe all these are for the public hearing, but has anyone talked, and actually I'll call my insurance agent tomorrow.
Well, that's where I was.
Has anyone talked to an insurance company to see if this actually happens?
That's where I was going, ask, ask that.
If a town puts this in, does everybody's premium go up?
Yeah, I, I don't know.
Does anyone talk to them?
And I haven't talked to them.
I had asked that member Pat, I asked.
Well, maybe those questions will come up at public hearings.
Yeah, no, somewhere along the line, that's a good question, and somewhere along the line, somebody had done the research, I can't remember who, but had called the insurance company and that's where this came from, that it's identified on.
Are there any other area towns doing this?
Yeah, I don't know. And is it effective?
Well, I, I think that would be a great, I think that's a great thing. I think we should look at some area towns. I think we should look at some.
Probably the only thing to discuss in a public hearing.
And then, once we do this, what's going to be next? Like, is the police department, Public Works? Like, if, you know, I'm going to have to pay like a hundred feet in front of my house to have it plowed? Like, are we going to go down that road?
It'll go into a fund that Brandy has to, okay?
Well, no, I'm just curious, you know? If that's like where we're headed, on top of the taxes that we pay. And then if the police come.
We'll have a public hearing.
Do I have to pay for a bullet if they shoot me?
That's assuming one bullet would take you down.
Yeah, you're, that's correct.
Isn't this, isn't this precipitated by the presumption that insurance policies provide as a benefit to the insured to pay these expenses if there is a fire call or an ambulance call?
I think it's precipitated by the lack of funding from our state and I think a memo went out to all the departments saying, let's find any way we can to raise money.
I think, Joe, I think you're right.
But I remember one time, Anthony, I think you're, you're the party that precipitated this. I believe you presented to us.
To do that.
On the basis that insurance policies are written with these fees built into them.
Correct.
And we simply do not collect them.
That's exactly right.
And, well, an example is that, you know, when the ambulance collects on the, a fee as well, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I, for one, would like to see that data. I would like to see that insurance policy. And I'd like to know what other towns, area towns.
Well, I'm going to do this. I'm going to, I'm going to call my insurance company tomorrow and Dave Palumbo is going to call his insurance company tomorrow and any other business in town and residents, call your insurance companies and say, the town's looking to charge us if they have to come to our house with a fire truck or whatever. Am I covered? Is there insurance policy for that? And if not, and this town implements it, will my insurance go up because of that? So I think everybody's call their insurance company and get that in writing. Or also, if they don't have it. Because apparently we didn't, we didn't look at that yet. Or also, if they, if they do not have, if a person does not have it in their policy, are they then held harmless? And it's not like the town's going to.
I think it says that in here somewhere.
Yeah, it says that, no resident.
Individuals.
Yeah, you're not going to get a bill. Only insurance company will get a bill.
And again, I guess we would ask all these at the public hearing, but, so, so Anthony, that, the only thing that the homeowner or business owner is going to have to do is provide their insurance.
Correct.
Data to, uh, to whoever.
To the fire department.
To the fire department.
Provided to the insurance company and those things.
How did you come up, how did the police, uh, Fire Commission come up with these numbers? Is there an insurance industry standard?
This is like a standard. This was discussed probably.
Five years, six years.
Five to six years ago, it started a discussion for Fire Commission man.
And Richard Brannigan. Richard Brannigan did not want to do it.
Right. It was, he didn't want the fire marshal fee part. He wasn't too much against the other part. He was the fire marshal fee. And you're right, the insurance policy, check your policy at home, turn it over, fire service charge, is there any charge that you've got covered for, it's like uninsured motors and so on. So there are several towns that do this billing and it's not going to replace our tax dollars, it's supplementing the money. So if you reduce this tax dollar, whether it's caused by lack of state aid, whatever. And it's low hanging fruit that's out there and saying, shame on you for not asking for the money. That's all it is. So if we get, you know, a twenty percent collection rate, it's twenty percent money we didn't have before, that we use less money, a half pair of dollars, to buy new burst tools and hoes and whatever the case may be. That's all it is.
So who's going to do the billing?
The billing company that does our ambulance billing. When the chief renegotiated this, probably about four years ago, he included that in their provision and they will do the billing.
So do they get a cut of it then?
Four percent, the payment they get on the ambulance bill.
That was my question, yeah.
So, all this money stays for the fire department. So in other words, I guess.
In the current language, yes.
Right, it's like, you know.
We can change anything.
Yeah, I'm just saying, like, if Brandy needed something or the police department needed something.
Well, the billing, fire rescue billing is the fire department, the fire marshal fees is general fund revenue, just like billing official fees.
So I guess, Anthony, how did, so I can feel comfortable coming into a public hearing with it, how did we, like, the fire marshal fees?
Yes.
So we all pay taxes in town.
Yep.
And they don't get paid much, but the fire marshals get paid.
Correct.
And their job is to go around and do this. So why is it extra? I mean, I can understand, like, the permit fees, it's like a building permit or anything else, but these annual inspections that they're supposed to do to come to a business and do that, why, why should there be a fee for that when the guys are getting paid by the hour while they're doing it anyway?
Correct.
They're in town card, town gas, town insurance.
You're correct.
Town pension. Taxpayers all pay for it.
Not town pension, but that's right. But the, again, the point is that several other towns, and I have the data from different towns, do bill for this at various levels of. It's no different than if, if, think about the amount of time that Big Y comes into town.
So this is something that somebody, some of the other towns are doing, so we're looking at.
Several towns, several towns. We're, we're the minority that don't do it.
And I give you credit, we're looking at losing eight hundred thousand from education, so.
And again, it's not talking, setting the world on fire, but you're talking about a couple dollars here and there. So again, it's, it's, again, as Anthony mentioned, it goes back probably six, seven years, this topic was brought up in the Fire Commission. It's been multiple iterations and it kind of died, go to some other, uh.
Okay.
Well, also, you guys lost a lot of revenue with fundraising, you know, like you used to do a comedy night and.
Yeah, that's more at the company level, that's not really department.
Yeah, but still, you raised revenue doing, you know, the races and all that. And then fill the boot, that money goes where?
Each company that does their own fundraising. Company one does the, fill the bucket, company two does golf tournaments, company three does bike build.
So on these annual inspection fees.
Yes.
Generally during the budget season when the Fire Chief gives his report and this is one of the areas where they talk about the inspections and everything and generally, if I remember correctly, they generally don't have enough time to do all the inspections that they're supposed to do. So are people going to get billed for it if they don't get the annual inspection? Is it just a mandatory thing that you're going to get this bill? Only if.
It's a per inspection basis. It's not going to be a blanket charge.
Okay.
Yeah, the thing was like, kind of if you remember from the meetings about the burning permits.
Mm-hmm.
Someone said, you know, it requires them to build a paid workout, we have to go out to the scene, review what they're going to burn, it's not like tires and illegal stuff. Take pictures of it, come back, complete the form, send it to the police station, there's a multiple step process involved. So I think what the, the last iteration of this was a one very minimal fee, fair fee for the entire year. So again, it's not looking to hurt anybody, it's more of a matter of saying, okay, there's, there's time involved, let's compensate. You're a hundred percent right on the arcade for the services, the, the fire and marshal and stuff. But again, if this is the norm of what towns do to get money in, why are we not doing it? That's what it boils down to. And to go back to your, your police, I mean, the police do bill for false alarms, they bill for different permits and different, you know, bizarre permits and gun permits, things like that. So it's, it's a user legitimate basis.
And then do we bill for blasting permits and?
Yeah, that was in there.
Yeah, right.
That's, sorry, that's currently, because it states that you're going to bill for that.
All right, we have a opposed motion, suggested motion for the first one, which is entitled Fire Department for a public hearing on February seventh, two thousand and seventeen at seven PM, if somebody wants to move that.
Well, is the concept that we're just going to do one the first night?
I think.
The only reservation I have about that is we're asking people to come out four times if in fact they've got interest in all of these fees.
We could do it all at once. Yeah, I think we should do it all at once.
We might want to continue it if it goes too long, but.
Right.
Yeah.
I think if you ask people to come back four times, people that may genuinely have an interest in objecting or adding something to all four of them, may not do that.
I think I agree with Council Rose though. I think we really need to somehow get this out there so people are aware of it. And I don't know the best way to do that, whether it's putting it on the website. I think it definitely should go in the newspaper more than once.
Well, we have three weeks before our next meeting.
Yeah.
The way it is. So I think we have enough time that there should be at least one issue of the Totaka Times.
Would that make sense to put out in a bridged version, and by that, I mean is, like, in our agenda, we're conducting a public hearing for considering the following fees, and literally just itemize a fee. Fire suppression, X dollars, commercial structure. For deep, and then at the end, put in a statement for detail, please consult the proposed regulation, which can be found at the library, we're online, whatever. Would that not make more sense that people see the dollars and cents?
I think it does.
Know what we're talking about.
Absolutely. And I keep it in layman's terms, yeah. I mean, absolutely. But I think the public should be aware of, you know, the dollar.
And then in the meantime, I would like to know what the towns in our area do as well.
Yeah.
Can compare apples with apples.
Absolutely.
Is that possible, Ann?
Sure.
And I think Council, you know, Al was right too about the insurance company too. I'd love to.
Well, I think that, you know, you should call your home or read your policy and see, you know.
Because that's about the last meeting.
But again, it says if you don't have insurance, they're not going to bill you.
Right.
So then you're already paying for it, for that coverage, if you have it. If you have it, I guess. If you have it. If you're not, then it's okay. If you don't have it, if your insurance doesn't cover that. Then that's okay. Apparently they're not.
But the, 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 the numbers for your building, for your house, is that an individual's going to have to pay that themselves or herself, right? If you don't have the right size.
Oh, then it's the ordinance on street signs.
That's a different ordinance.
That's, that's our next one. The first one is fire rescue building, fire marshal fees and key lock boxes.
Because I was saying, I was including that.
Yeah.
So.
But like fire suppression residential structure.
So we have a suggested motion for the first three.
First three.
It's for chapter forty.
Oh.
Okay.
General, general rates, process.
Two oh five. Somebody want to move that motion?
Second it. I'm sorry, on the table.
It was already made.
It's already on the table.
Yeah, we're at the discussion phase.
All right, so.
Who is the, who is the first and second on that?
I, I.
I second it.
You did?
Dan was the first.
So who moved it?
Dan.
Dan and Marie seconded it. And then we had discussion.
I'll go for a roll call.
Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnen.
Yes.
Councilmember Angeloni.
Yes.
Armin.
Yes.
Candelora.
No.
Diamond.
Yes.
Manna.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
And Rose.
Yes.
All right, next one is ordinance, is the ordinance of street signs and numberings of buildings, chapter two oh five.
Should we just do it at the second meeting in February instead of trying to have?
Yeah, do this one.
Yeah, I don't see how.
On the twenty-first?
Right.
The first one with this.
I, I think this should be separate.
I mean, this was probably a quick one, because it's just saying everyone has to have three inch numbers and whatever.
Didn't we do, I, I know we did that once.
We have, this is reflective. It's a, it's a minor change. I take thirty seconds to talk about. It really shouldn't, nobody would have any big gripe about it. For a two dollars, it's going to cost you to go to hardware store and buy letters or numbers, it's not even in the little world.
You mean you're not going to give them to everybody?
Because we had a whole big, like, one of the councils I was on, we did the whole thing trying to get people for, you know, it probably was its ordinance, street numbers.
Yeah, I remember that. There is an ordinance.
I mean, different numerous, White Scout attempts to go through and do projects, Eagle Scout projects and, you know, so it's a matter of taking it from three inch letters to three inch reflective letters, interior lots having reflective signage. It's all, it really is, not a really huge issue, just a matter of, you know, chucking it reflective on the mailbox.
Well, can we hold, can we set the public hearing times for the same time on the same night for these two different things? Because one is chapter forty, one is chapter two oh five, and the motions, the suggested motions both say seven thirty. So if we're going to do them both on one night, shouldn't we do this one first and make it at like seven twenty or something, or?
I think that makes sense. It makes a lot of sense, because, yeah, two, as Anthony said, chapter two oh five is, is.
It's one page.
Right, it already exists and there's some, a slight tweak in terms of reflective language. It's already exists, whereas.
Set this at seven thirty and the next one seven thirty-five.
Well, we just made the motion at seven thirty.
All right.
It's not a problem.
Just put them both at seven thirty and we'll start with this one first.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I was wondering if we could have them both at the same time.
Well, we start them at the same time and we sell when they go. As long as they're citizens, citizens input.
Well, I, I think Rose's point that you, I, I suggest that seven twenty, I think, makes sense, because you want to open it maybe, or open and close that one and get closure to that one. If you get to the fire and the ordinance is the fees, you may have to continue it.
Right.
Right? So theoretically, you could open and close that one, get that one out of the way and go to the fire.
That's fine.
So if seven twenty?
Yeah, right.
And these are all on the twenty-first?
No, on the seventh.
The seventh, the seventh. The seventh, the seventh.
Okay. I move that the town council set a public hearing date for February seventh, two thousand and seventeen, at seven twenty P.M. On the proposed ordinance two oh one, seven dash two, entitled Street Signs and Numbering of Buildings.
Second.
Roll call. Discussion, roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnen.
Yes.
Councilmember Angeloni.
Yes.
Armin.
Yes.
Candelaora.
Yes.
Diamond.
Yes.
Nana.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Next is new business, discussion in action, review of possible reassignment of pending litigations with former town attorney.
Yeah, this is one I wanna discuss. I think consistent with, with past practice, whenever there's been a change in the town attorney's office, what we've always done, and what we did this last time around, was to maintain the existing files or active litigation with the then-town attorney, rather than transferring them. We've saved the town some money on the learning curve and, and whatever costs would be associated with transferring the file. And that was done here, when there was a change in town attorney approximately a year, a year and a half ago. What has since transpired is that the Board of Education has gone to arbitration with the teachers' union in towns, because they were unable to come to an agreement on a contract. That arbitration is handled by a process whereby three arbitrators are appointed. The teachers' union selects an arbitrator, the town Board of Education selects an arbitrator, and a neutral third arbitrator is appointed from a list of neutrals maintained by the state of Connecticut. We've come to be advised that the former town attorney, Attorney Jasmondi, is acting in the role of the arbitrator on behalf of the teachers' union. And while I don't believe that is a professional conflict of interest, I do have some concern if the town is in fact continuing to compensate the former town attorney for handling town matters, and I understand there are about five or six that are still being handled by his office, while at the same time, he's now undertaken a role that is adverse to certainly the Board of Education and indirectly the town as a whole, since much of the funding for the Board of Education comes from the town. Faced with that, I think it's appropriate that we consider this motion to direct the town manager to transfer any files that are currently being handled by the former town attorney, to turn them over immediately for further action by the current town attorney. So, to that end, I am going to make a motion that the town council direct the town manager, Michael Paulus, to instruct the former town attorney to immediately surrender any North Branford files on which he is working and being compensated for by the town, to the current town attorney, Pat Young.